It was nothing like what it used to be like over in Mason City.
Oh, yeah.
A dude over there. Name, what's his name, Max?
I was just gonna say, I think you're talking about Max.
I just would eat stuff, fuckin' beaks over there. I was like, oh my-
Public comments. Hearing none, now welcome everybody. Consideration of approval of the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Starr.
Hi.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Gend is approved as submitted. Consideration of approval of the minutes of the December 7 and December 16 meetings. Any discussion?
So moved.
Clerk, call the roll.
Jaeger. Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
The minutes of the December 7 and December 16 meetings are approved. Consideration of approval of the consent calendar. Any questions regarding the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr. Jaeger.
Consent calendar is approved as submitted. Do we have Mitchell Schweitzer here? Step forward, I assume we want to do this in front of maybe that?
I think so. That would be nice.
Don't pick your nose.
Best advice he can give me.
Raise your right hand. I'm Mitchell Schweitzer.
I'm Mitchell Schweitzer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge, discharge all the duties of police officer.
Discharge all the duties of police officer.
For the city of Charles City, Iowa.
For the city of Charles City, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
National license.
Aye.
Welcome aboard, Mitchell.
Thank you.
It's nice they got pictures of all his hair now because that's the way Kevin and the Chief and Doyle used to look. See you guys. Thanks for coming.
We're gonna be pretty safe now.
Looks like our most serious threats are leaving.
I don't know. We have one officer and one participant. She must be tough.
Slim crowd.
Any public hearing on Charles City Housing North Cedar Terrace Kitchen and Bathroom Accessibility Improvements Project 14-120C? Open the hearing. Have any, do we have the affidavit of publication?
Yes, Your Honor.
Any written comments or objections?
None, Your Honor.
Any oral comments or objections?
So moved, close the hearing.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hearings closed.
Consideration of Resolution 140-15, approving final plans and specs. Discussion. Who's doing the discussion?
Well, Heidi's not here tonight, but as she mentioned during our council workshop here, she's got some notes that I can read through here and talk about this. This project involves renovations being made to the kitchen and bathrooms of eight units, apartment numbers 81 through 84, and 129 through 132 at North Cedar Terrace. Renovations are necessary to make the properties ADA compliant. Bids are due December 14th. There were seven contractors in attendance at the pre-bid meeting, so they anticipated multiple bids. Wegener-Winegger will prepare bid tabulation and review the bids to ensure that they're all, that they all are, under submission, are included and they meet the bidding requirements. Housing will also review the bids on December 17th and make a recommendation to the council. Final plans were amended by one addenda. Addendum number one changed Section 008,000 supplementary conditions to clarify that the permits will be required, but the fee will be waived by the city. Section 01, 2000 price and payment procedure was changed to add an allowance of $4,000 for vinyl composition flooring to the base bid. Section 09, 9000 painting and coatings clarifies that the owner will supply the paint. There were some additions to the notes on the drawings to identify the ceiling area to be painted, change the location of the electrical panel, and to clarify the work to be done on the water heater closet. Finally, the drawings and drawing notes were clarified by indicating that all existing circuit wiring is to be reused, and that all electrical devices and demolished walls will be relocated as required. All other electrical devices will remain unless noted.
We had six bids, Steve.
I think there was four, wasn't it?
We'll get to the bids in a minute.
Four, seven. Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Anything further on 140-15?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Resolution 140-15 is approved. Next is consideration of Resolution 141-15 awarding the bid. Discussion.
It appears I think I read off the notes for you on that before the second resolution as well.
I think getting back to what Jerry said, there were five or six.
Six.
And most of the bids were about what the estimate was.
And the final one was considerably-
Yeah, considerably lower.
Almost 10,000 below the spec.
What was, what was the estimate?
Ninety-three.
I was thinking about ninety or ninety-three was the thing.
Ninety-three, something.
Ninety-three, yeah.
Says that this is about 10,000 less.
And she said she did contact them to make sure that they were confident in their bid, and they were very confident that that was, they didn't miss anything, so she-
She seems to like that bidder.
Yeah.
And they have done-
That confidence.
Well, in projects. We've worked with them in the past and they-
They've done a lot with our housing rehab projects as well as part of the bid process. They're one that usually generally bids, and sometimes they get them, sometimes they don't, but they're usually active in the bidding process.
I would so move for 141.
I'll second.
Fifteen.
Should we announce? Should we announce the amount of who got it, or?
Yeah.
Certainly can.
Normally do.
Yep.
Bid was, that we're approving was 83,950, and that was submitted by Watertight Construction.
Thank you.
I'm gonna have a motion, but I don't think I have a second.
It's ended.
I second.
Any further discussion?
This will be paid out of their housing improvement funds.
Capital improvement.
Yeah, capital improvement funds.
Clerk, call the roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Resolution 141-15 is approved, and the bid is awarded. Consideration of third and final reading of ordinance 1087, amending Chapter 55 Animal Control Ordinance. Discussion.
Well, we've had two prior, two prior readings to this, so tonight if we approve, this will go into law once published, but it makes amendments to our Animal Protection and Control Ordinance, and addresses a number of issues that we found that we wanted to improve upon, specifically relating to dogs and dogs within the public. And some of the notable changes are that we will now be requiring a leash law. Animals at public events will be permitted as they had in the past, although if there is an event going on, the person, the public will have the opportunity to request that animals or dogs not be allowed at public events. That has to happen prior to the event happening, of course. We addressed licensing and registration. Currently, we do not have any licensing or registration, but that's something that we're going to be starting here at the first of the year, and all registrations will be due annually by March 1st. So, side note, we added our style of dog tags, and I think we're going to go with a bone shape. And I found that the vet clinics are using a bell shaped in a green or a blue this time, so we'll do a color that differentiates and a shape that differentiates, so we can easily tell between the rabies shots and the licensing, licensing tags, I should say. So part of, part of the licensing process, we'll get into in the next section here, but we're incentivized chipping and spaying and neutering. We're also going to, we've also tightened down the involvement of impoundment of dogs, and how we deal with vicious dogs, and what dogs can be reclaimed and not, so we put a lot of work into this, into this ordinance, so it's nice to see this come around to completion.
I might say that I think the work of the committee and yourself, and the city attorney staff, sort of rewarded in the fact that the public seems to be fairly accepting and haven't been any major disputes or concerns expressed regarding this change in the ordinance.
I like to think we found a pretty good compromise for both sides to really address some issues and improve things in the overall for the community, so.
It's kind of like everything else, throw it out there and see how it works for a while, and probably have to revisit and revise and-
We'll let you know March 2nd.
Saying that, I'd so move.
I'll second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Okay, the third reading's approved, and we'll now have it.
Ordinance number 1087, an ordinance repealing Chapter 55 Animal Protection and Control and adopting a new Chapter 55 entitled Animal Protection and Control, and which modifies the repealed chapter by modifying the definition pertaining to animals at large by redefining the term vicious dog by requiring a registration of all dogs by their owners by redefining the circumstances in which a dog can be impounded and then released.
Thank you. We've had the third reading. Now, a consideration of a motion to adopt and publish. Ordinance 1087.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Ordinance 1087 is adopted and will be published. Consideration of Resolution 142-15, establishing registration fees and late registration penalties for owners of canines. Discussion, we just had most of that discussion.
Right, now that we've approved the ordinance, well now we can approve the fees and the late, late registration penalties for the dog licensing, and basically we have a four-way matrix when it comes to pricing for licensing of the animal. And if you have your animal spayed or neutered, and it has a microchip, the registration fee will be $10 a year. If it does not have a microchip, and it's spayed or neutered, it'll be 15. If the dog is not spayed, but does have a microchip, it'll be 35. And if it's not spayed or neutered, and does not have a microchip, it'll be 40. The intent with that, that pricing structure is to incentivize people to have their animal spayed or neutered, as well as to have them microchipped. We're also going to assess a $5 penalty per license for anything that's received after March 1st of the year for annual registration, so that is all.
Just further discussion?
I never asked this question before, but when you microchip, is that just a one-time thing?
It's a one-time thing.
You mean that lasts for the life of the dog?
Right, it's a one-time thing, and you know, PAWS has had a couple of different events where they've had a group come in and do microchipping, and can get it done for a reduced rate. I think that's usually around 25 to $30. Otherwise, you can have, vets will typically do that, and I think regular, it's around 35, $40 to have a microchip.
We aren't going to have a chip reader, we're just going to have them bring in the receipts showing it.
We will have a chip, we will have a chip reader.
We will, here.
The plan, yeah, we'll have one here at the City Hall Police Department, and then one with our animal control officer.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Resolution 142-15 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 143-15, accepting subordination agreement. Discussion.
As we discussed the other night with Heidi, we have a participant in our owner-occupied housing rehab program that's looking to refinance a loan on her, on the home, and to do that, the city is being asked to subordinate on the loan to this additional amount. There's going to be a $2,000 amount added to the current mortgage, and so the city is being asked to subordinate to that. Current, the current mortgage on the property is $18,317.20. Access value is 57,500, and so, and the loan-to-value ratio is approximately 70 percent. Anytime you, anytime the city does a owner-occupied housing project where we gift funds that have been awarded through HUD, through CBG, the city's on the mortgage, and so if there's ever a refinance, the city's asked to subordinate on that. I don't know if we've done that a whole bunch here, but probably a few times. Done that a number of times in other projects I've been involved with, and so it's, it's a pretty small amount, and so I would recommend that we subordinate.
This leaves us with plenty of protection on this situation.
I think it's a good thing not to allow a lot of new money to get in there ahead of us, but I've got to believe that a fair portion of this is going to be just refinancing fees, so it's going to be tough to do a refi nowadays without getting some fees involved in it, so.
Sure. Your loan-to-value, was that correct, Steve?
It's if you put both loans together.
Okay.
Ours and the first, then it's right.
Annually, ours drops off a pretty good portion, well, each time of that, it was a five-year program, so, of that 20% drops off every year, so adds to our security in this project as well, so.
Further discussion?
I'd so move.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Resolution 143-15 is approved. Consideration of the first reading of ordinance 1088, rezoning property located at 1,006 North Grand. Discussion.
Yeah, Stacy and Stacy Ackerson, they own the property at 1,006 North Grand. This is the former Charlie Western Railroad office building, and this past summer, they rezoned that property from M2 to B3 in order so they could rehab the building into professional office space on the first floor and apartments on the second floor. During their remodeling of the property, clearing it out, there was some concrete pedestals and footings to the east of the building that they determined that they could use that for mini warehouses, for the, for the foundations for future mini warehouses. Unfortunately, under our B3 zoning district, mini warehouses are not permitted use. So we've been working with the Ackersons and trying to determine a way that this can be, this can be achieved, and then we've, we've determined that the only feasible option is to rezone the easterly portion of this property back to M3 light industrial, so it can be a permitted use for mini warehousing. The Planning and Zoning Commission, they've been working with them as well, and they actually held a public hearing on this matter last Tuesday, December 16th, and they passed a recommendation for the city council to approve this adoption of this ordinance, so we recommend that the council accepts the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation and approve the first reading of ordinance 1088.
The only big concern, not even a big concern, the only concern we really had was kind of related to the spot zoning, but there's, as we kind of discussed, there's some different, there's, it's kind of broken up. This parcel's actually, is broken up that it wouldn't cause an issue, that, you know, if they were to resell it down the road as far as spot zoning goes, which you don't normally like to do, although it is, it is adjacent to, across the street from the former White, White Farm area, so it, both, both zonings fit the areas. It's not about whether they fit or not, it's more of the splitting up one lot into different zonings.
That's correct. Immediately to the north is M2 zoning, and it's going back to what it had been zoned just this past summer.
You got a motion?
Not yet.
I'd so move.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Okay, first reading is, is approved. Going to have the first reading?
It's 144-15. Um, is this one? All right, there we go. Got to turn the page. Ordinance 1088, ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of City Charles City to change the classification of parcel of this property from B3 service business district to M2 room inspection.
Thank you. Consideration of Resolution 144-15, setting public hearing on ordinance 1088 to rezon property located at 1,006 North Grand. Discussion.
Yes, in addition to the Planning and Zoning Commission's public hearing, the council is required to hold a public hearing on this rezoning request, so we recommend that the city council approve Resolution 144-15, setting January 4th, 2016. At 7:00 PM is the date and time for the public hearing on the rezoning matter, and we authorize, we ask that the council authorize the city clerk to publish the notice for the hearing as well.
Further discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Resolution 144-15 is approved.
John, we have your word, we won't see this property again until it's complete, all right? Until next year, it's very close. It's a great project. Nice to have it done.
We really need to see when it's, when it is done, though.
Consideration of Resolution 145-15, accepting the Riverfront Picnic Shelter Project. Discussion.
Building and Grounds LLC, they are the general contractor for the 2014 Riverfront Park Picnic Shelters Project, and they've completed the construction of the project improvements and substantial compliance with the plans and specifications. Now, this project consists of the construction of three park shelters. Two of the shelters measure 27 by 20, 20 feet, one located behind IC Church, and the other located at the end of Leland Avenue, and a third larger structure, 27 by 40 feet, located at the end of St. Mary's Street. Now, Building and Grounds' original bid price, 100, was $124,050. This was basically a lump sum project, and it didn't have any changes, so the final construction cost matches their bid price of $124,050. So we recommend approval of Resolution 145-15, accepting the project and authorizing final payment for the Riverfront Park Picnic Shelters.
Discussion.
John, was there a completion date on that original contract? That was last fall, that they started, last summer that they started it, wasn't it? That carried over through the last winter?
Yes, it was actually started last year.
I know behind IC Church, they had quite a mess there, all went along and dragging it out, but they're in, they're completed on time, is okay?
Yes.
Are those picnic tables anchored down some way, or chained down, or something, so they can't be moved out of there?
That'd be a question for Steve Lindeman, I haven't seen him with the picnic shelters, or the, the tables in them.
They do have tables, I thought you told me that.
I haven't looked, but I can't tell you if they're permanent or not.
We will find, we will find out. That's a good idea.
Has, have we ever, we're nearing the end of the, you know, the first, at least the original construction of the project for this park, have we taken a look just to see what was, what, if anything is left undone, and then comparing that also to the issue of restroom facilities, which I think have been discussed several times regarding that particular location? It's more along the lines of seeing where we're at with the capital improvement plan for this particular area, and see what's left versus getting that restroom facility paid for somehow, some way in the near future. Okay, I'm just raising, it has nothing to do specifically with this, but it's-
I think it's a great point, I think it, we should go back and look and see what the original plans were, and see what all's been completed and what's still left sitting.
John and I were just talking about portage options this morning, too, so there's, there's other things that need to happen out there, for sure. Restrooms.
Any further discussion?
And the funding for this, Steve, is coming out of Park and Rec? Or is it kind of a combination, isn't it?
There's a grant.
There was a, there was a recant grant, wasn't there?
Recant grant.
Part of, part of it.
Part of it, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah, Park and Rec, hotel motel, and then that, the recant.
Recant grant, that's what I was thinking, it was multiple sources.
In the motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
145-15's approved, and I think it, by the way, adding on it, I think the picnic tables are going to be a nice addition to that area, more ability to utilize it in a friendly way.
I already used one of them for Mike's and mine wedding vow renewal, so it worked out really slick, so.
Didn't ruin the table, did it?
Didn't ruin the table, so we behaved.
Next up is Resolution 146-15, accepting the 2015 sanitary sewer lining project. Discussion.
Well, Sentchu Form Technologies, they're the general contractor for the 2015 sanitary sewer lining project, and this is an annual project we have to line existing sanitary sewers in town to fight inflow, inflow and infiltration. We're able to do that by doing this all trenchlessly, where we can insert and build a new pipe basically within the existing pipe and not have to worry about removing and replacing pavement. Now, the, the original project included lining approximately 4,500 lineal feet of sanitary sewer in the Yorkshire area, as well as on 8th Avenue between D and J Streets. Now, Sentchu Form's original bid price was $101,853.10, and this was a very favorable, favorable bid that we received, and so we negotiated a change order and included an additional 2,250 lineal feet of sewer lining on Hart Street between Riverside and Kellogg, as well as on 8th Street between Charles Street and South Main. So altogether, the 6,750 lineal feet of sewer lining was completed at a cost of $151,591.74. So we recommend approval of Resolution 146-15, accepting the project and authorizing final payment for the 2015 sanitary sewer lining project.
Wasn't the original estimate, engineer's estimate of this about what the whole project ended up being, that's why we added on some additional footage, or?
Yeah, because we, we actually had budgeted 150,000.
That's what I thought.
But the original bid was, like I said, we, it was very favorable, it was just a little over 100,000, so we were able to do a lot more.
Right. I mean, it's, I think it was well worth it, but I just, that's what, thought what the original deal was, is that the estimate was a lot higher than what their bid was, so that's why we did more, so, yeah. Been a good project. Right, so move.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Resolution 146-15 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 147-15, accepting the 2015 HMA paving project. Discussion.
Heartland Asphalt out of Mason City, they're the general contractor for the 2015 Hot Nicks Asphalt Paving Project. They've completed the project in substantial compliance with the contract documents. This project had a number of street paving segments to it. One was the HMA overlay with, using crack and seat paving in the Yorkshire area, that's on Lake Shore and Yorkshire Drives. Also full-depth asphalt paving on Hart Street between Riverside and Walnut Street. And we had about approximately two blocks of full-depth patching and overlay on Riverside, just south of the Canadian Pacific Railroad tracks, and approximately 300 feet of HMA paving, again using crack and seat paving on Rove Avenue out by Metas. Additionally, we resurfaced and restriped the lower city hall parking lot, this is the parking lot between the city hall and the river. We're able to get that overlaid. Now, Heartland's original bid was $436,646.77, and the final project cost was just $655 over that, at a total cost of $437,301.30. Now, they have, Heartland has provided the city with a maintenance bond, a four-year maintenance bond that can be used, if necessary, to correct any defects caused by faulty workmanship or materials. So we recommend approval of Resolution 147-15, and accepting the project and authorizing final payment for the 2015 HMA paving project.
Discussion.
Everything was done as it was supposed to be and as per contract, and Heartland's done a lot of workforce in the past as well.
That's a good summary to get it done, do it apparently efficiently, if a little interruption is possible.
The projects completely look really nice, but obviously the parking lot and all New Yorkshire, and they're really a big difference from what they were, so.
Yeah, they did a nice job.
Yes.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Resolution 147-15 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 148-15, approving reduction in retainage for intake modification project. Discussion.
Yes, the 2015 intake modification project, this was the project, well, in the 2010 PermaWavel paving project, at the corners, the contractor installed these, they called them cobblestone infiltration areas, they were rock-filled areas where the stormwater would run off the pavement into these areas. It didn't really work out, so what we did in this project was remove those areas, fill them in, and converted them into more traditional curb-style intakes. Now, CAM Excavating, they've pretty much, they've substantially completed the project, there's just some minor areas of filling and grating that had to be done. It's our opinion, and the contractors agreed, that that type of work should be completed in the spring, and the contract documents require us to withhold 5% of the payment, pay for only 95% of the work completed, but the remaining work has little value, so it makes sense to release part of that retainage and release 3% and go from 5% to 2% retainage. And at 2%, we still are retaining approximately $3,300, an amount of $3,300. So we recommend approval of Resolution 148-15, approving the reduction in the retainage.
Discussion.
As we've talked about, at several of our meetings on this, and I know that Delancey Wells brought this point, that it's one of those projects that looked good on paper, but when it actually got to functionality of it, it just, you know, it's big, it's hard to maintain, you know, it's a kind of depression there, it served a very good purpose, but when it comes to practicality, it just wasn't a good fit, so we have to be flexible on some of these things, and this is a good way to listen to some of the people that are surrounded by these, that ask for something a little bit different, and it turned out really nice.
That total contract was approximately $160,000, that area?
Yes.
And that, we had to take out what was done, because it was something new and didn't work, or, I mean, that, where does that money come out of? Is that out of our road fund, or?
The Storm Sewer Fund? Or Stormwater Fund?
I guess I'm concerned, is that poor engineering on their part, or on their recommendations, or we tried something and it didn't work out, and it's costing us some money? All of the above?
I'd say the latter is more correct than probably the former. It was something new, there really isn't a lot of this, you know, type of paving that's been done recently, if you remember right, this was one of the earlier projects in the state.
One of the first ones.
And I think they just, you know, designed it to be really efficient in that manner, and it just really didn't work out the way everyone thought it would, and you had a lot of big rocks with a depression there, and leaves and everything else were getting caught in them, and I just think it didn't work. One of those deals where it didn't work in reality when it looked good on paper.
Yeah, and that was the first project in 2010, but then in 2012, the second project, we did make that change, and we didn't put in those rock, we put in traditional intakes.
Yep.
Okay.
Really, as the total cost of that project, this is a pretty small percentage of what didn't work.
And it's better for us to fix it than to just say, oh, no, this is what we want, and we're going to leave it. No, it's, we're going to fix it to the way it looks, it served a very vital purpose to allow for any kind of, you know, dirty water, let's just say, to allow seepage for that, and kind of, you know, get it, you know, the extra drainage away, but the actual rocks and everything, it collected trash, it collected debris, I mean, it's all the stuff, it was tricky to walk in that area as well, so we're fixing it, we did.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Star.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Resolution 148-15 is approved. Consideration of Resolution 149-15, approving conditional acceptance for First Avenue Extension Project. Discussion.
Well, Estes Construction, on behalf of the Charles City Community School District, they've informed the city that the First Avenue Extension Project between L Street and Park Avenue, this is a paving project that is in coordination with the new middle school project, but they've let us know that it's substantially completed and can be open to, and maintained for local traffic. Now, Estes Construction has requested that the city assume responsibility for the maintenance of the road, with the exception of the items to be completed in the spring, and the council's action tonight is a conditional acceptance that will allow the city to maintain the street this winter for snow plowing. Remaining work that has to be completed in the spring, that includes the fine grading and the seedbed preparation, seeding and mulching, and also completing any punch list items. And then at that time next year, when everything's ready, we'll come back to the council for a full acceptance of the project. So we'd recommend approval of Resolution 149-15, conditionally accepting the First Avenue Extension Project.
Discussion.
Now, this being a new, a newly opened road, something kind of new for that area, it's a high-traffic area, are we going to be monitoring that road to see if we need any additional traffic control devices at all, or what kind of, what's the plan going forward with that?
So, we'll just keep it under monitor, we'll monitor it and make sure that everything's working like it should.
All right, thank you. Right, so move.
Second.
Further discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Star.
Aye.
Resolution 149-15 is approved. Miss Lane's correspondence?
None.
City Attorney's report?
I don't have anything to report, Your Honor.
City Clerk's report?
Okay, we will not have a planning session on December 28th, considered our Christmas gift to all of you, so we will not be meeting. Our next meeting will then be January 4th, and that'll be a regular meeting. I want to remind everybody that City Hall will be closing at noon this Thursday and closed on Friday for Christmas, so, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Christmas is only one day long.
Hey, you be quiet.
Okay. City Administrator's report?
Everybody should have had one of these at their place tonight, this is just a little report I like to put together to kind of give you some background of what we've got going on at the city, you know, prepping for budget-wise. Basically what this consists of is I have a little summary there at the beginning, but I put in our evaluations over the last few years, our levy rate trends, our budget workshop schedule, which it sounds like those dates and times work for everybody, so that's great to hear. On the page following that, we have more of the details of what we'll be talking about each night, so you can take a look at that. And then the next three sections are basically a collection of our various projects from the departments. We've got our ongoing projects for fiscal year '16, what those are, what costs, status, and how far along we are with those, there's a little over page of those. And then we have our new projects for fiscal year '17, these are the things that the departments have put in their budgets for consideration for this year, so we'll take a look at those. Then you have the future projects on the next section, those are some of the longer-term or wish list, wish list, if you will, items, so keep those things in mind, and then the final page has some of our completed engineering projects that have happened, so take that and can, in connection with our goal-setting report, and that's what I'll be using to help us develop this budget process as we move forward through the budget season, so that's just kind of a good starting block for the council to kind of get the juices flowing and think about various projects of what we have going on, what we've got coming, so if there's anything that's not on this list that you feel that should be, that's what we'll talk about during budget time, or if there's something on a list that should be on another one, you know, we'll just plug and play and see where it goes, but that's on there for your use.
Oh, one question. You have start times on these workshops, do you have any estimate as to how long they're going to take, like one hour, two hours, or for planning purposes?
I think for the most part, I think we want to try and keep them between an hour, hour and a half, two hours at the very most. Anything past that, you're not doing anybody any favors, so.
Losing productivity, aren't you?
I would say, I would plan a two-hour max, but anywhere between hour and hour and a half would be the goal.
Would that be about like last Wednesday night?
Why, how long was that? That was like 15 minutes, right?
I think of the last several years we've had, I don't think we've had one go, maybe two hours at the most, especially since we got streamlined, and the thought, having thought out ahead of time, they've moved a lot easier. As long as we get the information to us as soon as possible as well, they've seemed to have moved along as quickly as possible anyway, so less wasted time.
All depends on how much talking everybody does.
That's right.
Some are more than others, and how relevant the talking is.
So, that's that. In relation to our budget workshops, I know on the 13th of January, we've got our outside agencies coming in, and one of the questions that we had was ADC, we usually have outside agencies come, ADC came like a month or so ago and kind of gave a rundown of everything they've, that they've got going on, what they're requesting, so do we want them to come again, or was what we heard a month ago sufficient, or you'll have to let me know what the thought is with that, so we can either add or delete them from the list, but it'll probably be kind of a regurgitation of what we heard about it a month ago.
So we could bar Tim from our discussion?
Well, I know he didn't turn in a financial statement, and that's normally one of the things we request from the outside agencies, so I don't know if that means a lot to you guys or not, but it's up to you guys.
That's why he couldn't, but I don't know if there'd be a lot of discussion on his, as far as the area, but I wouldn't have a problem with him showing up at a scheduled time.
One possibility is if the council has questions for him, he could let you know so that he could be advised to be here to answer any of the questions. If none of them have any questions, then I guess he doesn't need to show up, but...
That'd be a good approach, so.
I think Tim was very comprehensive when he was here last time.
He was, he was, and if it hasn't made it down, I did receive a thank you from Tim and ADC, thanking for our renewal of the contract here a few weeks ago, so I'll share that with you as well. Parkside, we've been talking about light poles out there, and we're going to have, in the new, the Net Zero Housing Project, we're going to have, we're going to have four light poles going in, and seeing as it is a Net Zero project, we figured we'd do LED lights, so what else we're going to, but there's options, we could have gone high-pressure sodium if we wanted to, but...
Kind of meets the purpose.
So, yeah, it would be, it would be kind of kind of, so that'll be happening relatively soon. And lastly, I just want to mention that I did talk to Charlie Thompson about coming and updating the council on the quote unquote place, and he'll be at our first workshop in January, so kind of give us heads up and update on that project, so that's all I have.
Okay. And Board Commissioner Committee reports? Hearing none, we do need to have Councilperson Star, Malero, and Hammond stand by for being sworn in for a new term.
You're swearing us in, not swearing at us, is that right?
Well, little column A, little column B.
If it was me, I'd be swearing at you, the mayor doesn't swear, so we were just going to swear you in.
Shut up for Jaeger, though.
We can leave, Brian.
No motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we adjourn.
Always my pleasure.
Is this group or individualized?
It's individualized.
Oh, man, I can't hide behind anyone?
They pick first.
Well, we got it on the calendar, so, yeah.